Coming up in three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by W A C A. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID nineteen, is currently following the guidance from the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty, um, all public meetings are being conducted remotely if we so choose. Uh, and to participate remotely from a computer, please use the link provided uh in the uh agenda notice. Or you may telephone in uh calling the number also listed on the uh agenda notice. A first order of business will be.
John, sorry to interrupt, um, but I wanted to let everyone know I'm also going to be recording the meeting and um just as a backup. And I'm going to start now so you'll hear the lady say uh this meeting is being recorded.
Recording in progress.
Meeting is being recorded.
Excellent. I heard that from two different women's voices, I think. So there we go. Um, okay, that's good. So we're also being recorded by our assistant town planner, Emma Snellings. Uh, first order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call vote. Uh, I, John DeFeatherden, am present.
I, Brian Forso, am present.
I, Nathan Band, am present.
Hi, Stuart Segal, am present.
I, Anton Komarov, am present.
We do have that down well now and a nice smoothly operating machine there. Um, we have two items on the agenda this evening. Uh, first item is a continued public hearing involving uh zero Sewell Street and an application for variance and special permits. Public hearing was held um started on, I believe, September thirteenth, continued over in September twenty-seventh. And on September twenty-seventh, um, the board closed the hearing, uh, took a vote and asked um our assistant town planner, Emma Snellings, to draft a uh decision. Uh, decisions plural, uh, because there were several different applications that were pending. Uh, she's done that and um, why don't we um, why don't we discuss the um the draft decisions and perhaps first discuss the um decision that uh sought a uh a variance. Emma, did you receive any uh comments or proposed changes from uh anyone?
Uh, yes, so I received uh two comments. One of which changes the language, suggested changing the language. Oops, I'm scrolling to it now. Of the first finding, um, originally it read Massachusetts general law uh requires the board to approve or no, I changed it in my draft and so I don't remember what it said. It said, said, is required, the board is required to approve a variance if the following. Um, Nathan suggested that since the board still is able to decide whether they grant a variance, it's just that if you do approve it, you must make the following findings, that it would read better as Massachusetts general law requires that in order to grant a variance, the board must specifically find that owing to the circuit and then the rest uh stays the same. So that was just to clarify uh that language. Um, and then the other thing that was brought up is that I did not include in the documents or in a finding uh the opinion of town council that the board sought. Um, and that was initially just because it didn't really affect the course of the board's process, but it is, you know, a document that was in play. So I just wanted to know about the board about putting it in or not.
It was not a document that, it was a document that was submitted to board members um prior to the meeting and it was the opinion of council uh was not entered as part of the hearing. Uh, and I don't think uh opinion of town council should be part of um should be part of the um part of the decision. I think there was a reference um that we were that was in the minutes. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's something that should be in the uh in the decision. I, it's open to discussion if people disagree with me, but uh typically uh town council's opinion wouldn't be, wouldn't be in a decision.
I agree with you, John, as long as it's captured in the minutes.
Yeah, and it is, so.
Yeah, so that's cool.
Okay, um, I have no problems with the change that Nathan proposed. I think it certainly clarifies it and makes a little more clear what exactly um the general laws provide. Is everybody okay with that? Um, with that change? Any other questions, proposed changes or problems with the, with the draft decisions?
I just had one on the variance one on page three, um, under F, the um third bullet point down. It says the proposed project will have no impact on public services or utilities. And I, I really, I strongly feel that it has doubled the impact on the public services and utilities if they were to build two family homes instead of one family homes, which is the whole reason I'm against this. Um, and I would like it to be noted in there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where exactly are you on this? On the Brian, I, I see the, I see.
Page three on the.
Yeah, yeah, page three on the variance.
Third bullet point down.
Right, I think you might be in the special permit decision.
On the special permit, isn't it?
Did I get them? Did I, whoop. I missed my page, did I?
Because the special per, I, I'm going just by the votes because I know the variance, the vote was one in favor, two against, and the special permit was two in favor, one against.
All right, I got mine. I didn't print all the pages, my bad.
Variance is the one that ends in bullet D.
Okay, so the one that ends in bullet F, the third one down, third bullet, the proposed project will have no impact on public services or utilities. Um, I would like to change that to the proposed project will double the impact on public services and utilities. Going from a single family to a double family, you have twice the chance of a fire truck or ambulance being needed. You're using twice the water, um, twice the sewer.
But doesn't that assume that the use is a single family home? I mean, it's known for a commercial, if they want to put commercial in there, and who knows what that would do to utilities and public services?
Um, I don't think that's on the board, but um.
I think I'd, I'd be content with language that says something like doubles as compared to a potential one family use or a single home.
Well, how about if we just say the proposed project may, may have an impact on public services or utilities?
Works for me.
Because we're denying it anyways, uh, so that.
Yeah, um. Well, I guess it's um given outright that it will have an impact on public services, but I'd just like to note that as stated, to put a duplex in there, basically, maybe it's strong language, but basically it doubles the impact on public services and utilities to put two houses on one lot.
But, but my point is doubles as compared to what? We don't know that they're putting a single family house there as the alternative. Right, we talked at the hearing, they could put an eight thousand foot commercial facility there.
Yep.
And that would have a very different impact on utilities and services.
Right, um. Well, as it stands now, it says it will have no impact.
Well, so I agree that that's probably not the best language.
Yeah, so maybe not double the impact on public services or utilities, but um I, I think it needs to, it's the whole reason that I'm against putting a duplex on these properties is because it's double.
Well, how about if we say the proposed project will impact public services and utilities?
No, that, that's um that's true, but that's not really the reason that I said no. Uh, I said no because it's double what's allowable. They don't even need a special permit, I don't think. Um, despite the, the size thing, but they can put a single family home on either one of these lots despite the size. With, without our approval, they don't need our approval. They were just coming to us for the special permit because they wanted to put a duplex on the property.
Right, well, isn't your, isn't your concern covered in the next um the next bullet point, which talks about the existing neighborhood uh and that the proposed two-family dwelling does not align with the existing neighborhood character due to its much larger size?
Um, I believe that's a bullet point all in its own, but I don't believe the bullet point above that will have no impact on public services or utilities. If they put a single family home, I, I, I don't know how you want to word it, but.
Well, um, I mean, I, I, I agree that, you know, no impact is not the, probably not the term to use, but.
Will it increase the impact?
I'd be comfortable with that will increase, would increase the impact on public services or utilities?
That works for me.
Okay, okay, with that, Nathan, Stuart, thank you very much. Wiser minds prevailed. Yeah, Emma, do you um have that language to make the change there on that one?
Yep, so to read the proposed project would increase the impact on public services or utilities.
You can just change the or to an and.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, everybody good with that?
Yep, Nathan, you're set, okay. Um, jumping back to the um about more on this one, so why don't we stick with this one? The um, this was the special permit hearing. Um, any other changes that you re-proposed, changes that you received on, on this one, Emma?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, everybody with the changes that we discussed in um paragraph F and findings, uh, with those changes incorporated, everybody content with the decision as drafted?
Yep.
Okay, Nathan, good. Brian, you're good on that? Okay, we don't have to vote because we voted at the last hearing, correct, Emma? So all we need to do is have the changes prepared and then Nathan, Brian and myself have to get ourselves to town hall to sign, to sign the decision. Uh, moving over to the um variance request, we had talked about the um the change in language that Na- Nathan had suggested in paragraph A of the findings by the board. Um, any other changes that you received, proposed changes, Emma, that you received on that decision?
Uh, no, no other uh.
Okay.
Changes.
Um, Brian, Nathan, Stu or Anton, any additional changes? Otherwise, everybody comfortable with the language of the decision?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, again, we don't need to vote because we voted uh last time, so with this change being made, we will also have to get ourselves to town hall to sign the decision. Uh, Emma, when might the changes be made and the decisions be available for uh signing?
Uh, the decisions will be available through signing tomorrow. Eight, town hall's open eight to seven or eight to three thirty on Thursday.
Okay, very good. Excellent, thank you. Okay, that concludes this matter. And we are now going on to the next item on the agenda, which is a special permit public hearing at one forty-one East Union Street. Okay, I see the applicant is uh present in our Zoom meeting, so let me open the hearing by reading the uh notice that was published in the Metro West Daily News. The Ashland, the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. The Zoom video conference, um, and then there's the link for the uh conference to hear the petition of Mark and Deborah Pelletier requesting an accessory family dwelling unit special permit per chapter forty A, section, section six of the Massachusetts zoning app act and chapter two eighty-two, section seven point six, parenthesis, accessory family dwelling unit, close parenthesis and nine point three, parenthesis, special permits of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an accessory family dwelling unit. The property in question is located at one forty-one East Union Street, assessors map fifteen, lot zero eight nine in the residential A zoning district. Um, and Mr. T, this, excuse me, Mr. I'm having trouble speaking this evening. Uh, Mr. Pelletier, welcome to uh to our meeting. Um, let me just explain a little bit about what the process will be. Um, we typically uh ask the applicant to make a presentation uh telling us whatever it is you want to tell us about, about your proposal. Uh, the board members will have an opportunity to ask questions. Once that is done, we will open the hearing for a public comment if there are any members of the public that wish to be heard on the matter. Uh, and then typically, um, if we complete both of those items tonight, the board will also enter into um a discussion about the um the application and what our thoughts are uh on it and whether to approve or not, or have further questions, et cetera. So that's typically how we, how we proceed, if that's okay with you.
Sounds great. Thanks for having me.
Okay, and just to summarize, we're in, the property is in a residential R A district, which uh requires a special permit for an accessory family dwelling unit uh to be issued by the Board of Appeals. And section seven point six of chapter two eighty-two of the bylaws provides for the requirements for an accessory family dwelling unit, and that's what we will be focusing on this evening. Uh, all of that being said, I will turn the uh hearing over to you, sir.
Uh, yeah, so we're uh looking to put in uh an A D U unit for my mother-in-law. Uh, it'll be in the back of our, off the back of our garage and will include a third bay uh on the garage for, for her, for uh parking. Uh, do you want me to walk you through the documents that we submitted or?
Why don't, why don't you do that? I think that would be helpful for, for us, but it would also be helpful for anyone in the public who uh is observing and wants to, wants to know what, what's being proposed.
And um, Mark, if you'd like to share your screen to like show the plans, I can give you that power, or if you prefer that I share them uh for a visual, I can do that as well, whatever you're most comfortable with.
I spent a lot of time on Zoom, I'm comfortable with it either.
Okay, I will uh make you a co-host one sec.
Okay.
Okay, so you can share your screen to uh show the plans if you'd like to walk them through it.
Um, so the, the first part of this is kind of our, our existing layout. Um, so this is the, the bottom part of uh our basement uh with currently as a two-car garage. This is our existing first floor uh with the current deck and um bulkhead in the back, which will be moving uh as part of the addition. And this is our existing second floor. With a, a closet currently that goes out over the garage. Um, so those are all the existing layout on the house, and here are the existing pictures. Um, first two are from the front of the house and the second two uh are in the back of the house. Uh, next to the, the backside of the garage, uh, you see a window, that's where the, the addition will be. Um, and then the, the patio and the bulkhead will be uh being moved and part of the, uh, where the addition is going. And this is the proposed addition. Uh, the A D U is on the, the back side of the garage, that's this area here. And then there will be a uh hallway in between the two the main part of the house and then the uh, the A D U. Um, and then there will be an entrance unit uh to the A D U off the back right-hand side of the garage over by where the, the third bay is being added to the garage. And all of these are well within the uh, the setbacks uh of, of the property, which you can see on the dotted red line comes here. And then while we're doing the addition, uh, we are adding onto the master uh bedroom and expanding the master bath. Um, and that's what's illustrated here. Um, so the closet will be out over the garage and part of the bedroom will be out over the garage. Uh, these are um the renderings of, of what it will look like uh with the addition, third, third bay on the garage, addition above the garage and um the addition of the A D U in the back. And then um drawing from the side of what, what the um, the A D U will look like. Uh, if you're looking at this top drawing here, that's a little porch, which has a separation from, from the garage going into um, the, the A D U. Um, and then the deck will need to be taken down and then a new deck will be added on with, once the uh the addition is, is added on. Um, and, and then you can see the, the outside of the uh hallway that will be between the main house and the A D U, and that's this in the top picture, right picture here, that's the bump out on the back of the house. Here is our plot plan. And you can see the proposed addition uh on top of the, the existing uh dwelling uh all within the uh, the setbacks uh of, of the property. And then this, the final is uh the map of where we are, East Union Street, uh up the street from the high school. I think that is the entire packet that was included for you guys.
Yeah, very good. Anything else you wish to um to add at this point?
Um. Nope, I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, I guess the, the other piece I would add is, is the uh, the size of the A D U is, is within the, the zoning board requirements. So, you know, we're, we're, we're following all the rules on, on, on that piece.
Okay, um, well, why don't we open it up then for questions uh by members of the board? Um, Brian, why don't we start with you?
Um, very nice job, Mr. Pelletier. Um, I, I don't have any questions. It was pretty clear cut.
Okay, um, Nathan, how about you?
Uh, just a couple of quick points of clarifications. You said you're within the size requirements for an A D U.
Yes.
Actual square footage on the addition?
Uh.
Rather, not the whole addition, but just the A D U.
Was on here somewhere, I want to say seven hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay.
Um, there's a plan that says seven hundred ninety-eight square feet. That's on A two of the um first floor plan proposed. So by two, two square feet.
All right, um, and then can you go back to, I think it was page seven of the plans that you were showing had the shaded area showing the A D U?
Yep.
You shaded, so you've got next to the A D U there, a little area marked hall. Can you explain why that isn't considered part of the A D U? Uh, cause that is not, uh, there's, there's a, the separate door and that's actually attached to it, to, to the house. So um that's, you know, the, the, the door for the A D U is, is the, where the, where it's shaded. Um, the entry from, from the A D U into uh the hallway that is part of the house. Okay, um, that was the only clarification I needed. Thank you.
Okay, um, Stu, any questions?
So um, this proposal, we're not approving any part of this uh addition to the master bedroom, correct?
Uh, that's, that's correct, Stu. We're just ruling on a special permit request for the A D U.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. I have no further questions.
Okay, and Anton, any questions uh for Mr. Pelletier?
I got nothing. Seems pretty clear cut.
Okay, um, I don't really have any questions. Um, I think the, the plans were very nice, uh, certainly brought properly designed by an Ashland architect and your presentation was certainly thorough. Um, but for our purposes, if we vote to issue a special permit, we have to make certain findings. And I just want to make sure that um we have enough on the record that we can make those findings as I I'm sure we will. So I just want to go briefly down a section seven point six, the accessory family dwelling units. Um, and just to make sure that the additional family living unit, um, there'll be no more than four people living there. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. My, my mother-in-law is the only person that's going to be living there.
And they'll be, okay, um with respect to water and sewer, is it town water and town sewer?
Currently, we are on septic and we will need to tie into sewer, uh, to the town sewer, and I have uh sewer plants to, to do that.
Okay, so that is available to you then?
Yes.
Okay, that's one of the requirements. Um, and as far as ingress, egress and ac- access. Um, and again, I just want to make sure, because I'm sure you're, you've covered that, but the um there are exterior passageways uh and whatnot uh into the accessory unit um separately, is that right?
Correct, um, so there is.
You mentioned something from the garage into the accessory unit?
Yep, so uh off the right-hand side of the garage, uh, what is this? This is um page seven of the PDF. Um, in the back right-hand side of the garage, that's where the third bay is being added. There'll be stairs that go up and an exit out the back of the garage that goes onto a porch, uh, and then an entrance into the uh A D U. Um, so there are three uh exits to the A D U, one between the, the main house. Between the the main house and the ADU and then two exterior exits, one. Off the porch that comes from the garage and one on the back. Left hand side of the ADU.
Okay, and there is a. Direct access from the ADU into the primary uh residence?
Yes, that's the the hall area that you were asking asking about.
Okay. And the limit, the area is seven hundred ninety square feet, which uh. Is two feet short of the eight hundred square foot maximum. And. Provisions for off-street parking have been made. And the um. The property can only be occupied by. Uh. Now, the statute sets forth. And the definitions under section ten point zero. Say that the dwelling unit. Shall be instructed to accommodate an additional family related by blood marriage. Or adoption or sixty years of age or older. And as you indicated, it will be by your mother-in-law. So the unit obviously cannot be used as a rental apartment. And that typically would be a restriction. Or a condition in the decision if we were to vote in favor. Um, okay, I have nothing further. Does anyone else on the board have any? Further questions as a result of my rambling uh on?
I guess one thing that you prompted for me was just this being a a special permit, do we need to make the nine point three assessment too? Or um, or are the uh accessory dwelling unit factors substituted for those?
No, I think we do need to make it. Um, it's always been a question in my mind where there are some. Special permit requests that go outside. Others and and it's like a specialty special permit request, but I do believe we need to make all of the uh. We need to make findings uh in that uh in that score. Um.
Then I think it's probably worth asking how many additional vehicles are gonna be. Be there.
Good point.
Uh, one additional vehicle, which is why we're building uh onto the garage for her to be able to park in.
So and the plan is to, excuse me, the plan is to have. All uh all vehicles park in the garage and not in the driveway?
Um, yeah, I mean, we we have we we have three people that can that are driving cars and and parking, you know. Okay, so in the garage, assuming that we can get the car in the garage.
Well, that's that's a good point. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, some people obviously have. Uh, you know, that two car garage, but they also park one or two cars outside in the. In the driveway and that's something that we would need to just. Make a finding on because one of the. Requirements of the statute is that there is adequate uh adequate parking.
There there's uh plenty of adequate parking um. That in the garage and then in addition, we have a very large driveway.
I was gonna say, it looks like a very wide and lot long driveway.
I I think I could fit about ten cars, uh you know, within the 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 space of this driveway. Um, and then this this picture doesn't show the uh. The. The park by the street, um, so it's 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 a big driveway.
Okay, very good. Um. Any other questions from any board members before we, well? Let me think. We can do the the nine point three point two criteria. After we have a brief discussion, I think. Nathan about. Our feelings on whether to allow the request or not. I think it's pretty clear what we're gonna do, but. Why don't we take it step by step and have public comment first before we get to that? Part of the discussion, if that's okay? Okay. Um. Very good, then. Why don't we open the meeting for? Public comment. Um, Emma, if you can open up the screen again, I see Mr. DeSoney is here. And he's got the Zoom hand up. Uh, so he wishes to be heard. Uh, Mark, nice to see you again. You know the drill with. Name and address and um any questions for Mr. Pelletier, please ask them through the uh. Through the board chair, if you would.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark DeSoney. Forty-nine Hawthorne Road, two roads away. From this house and I just tell Mr. Pelletier, I drove by. Earlier, this late afternoon, let's take a little look. But I didn't stop by, I just drove by. And I noticed that the house. Is in between two houses. One house on, one house on the left, one house on the right and um. It is, this way show on the pictures. But I'm gonna ask the question about the width. Of the added on to the garage and then the uh. And the room. Is the uh on the left side. Going down the going down into the driveway, left side of the garage. It's seems like it's gonna be right above buffering. Up against the um property line itself. I just wanna, I wanna know how close to the property line. It's gonna be for a third, third car garage and the and the room. That's gotta be put there. Why? Why is this gonna be so tight on that side? That's one question.
Mark, according to the plans, I believe. The um side yard. Uh, measurement is twelve feet and the zoning requirement is ten feet.
So it is gonna be tight.
It's within the buildable part of the lot.
Okay. And to have um. And the addition off the deck to the to the garage side. I'm not being negative or anything, I'm just asking a curious question like I usually do and get get out of my system. I know, I was like, I said, I drove by, I know, I know it's it's. It says, that's a tree line. On the uh from the driveway, right's left side and all around to the back. I'm just wondering itself. Is the backyard gonna be able to hold? That width? That's going forward towards the back.
The plans show the rear yard. Setback after construction is forty-four feet. And the requirement. For zoning is thirty feet, so it would be well, well within the zoning. But it's permissible.
Yep. And um it's gonna make have some impact on. Water and sewage and all that, which is no problem at all, um. It says. It's gonna be. At the time when they had to dig out the deck. They're gonna have to bring in some sort of construction machinery to dig the back out. And clear that. Is that, is that gonna be on the special? Permit side of things too, or will that go through a different board?
I'm I'm not quite sure what you're asking, but go through a a different board, construction equipment?
Yeah, really. So you can take out the deck and put in. What he wants to put in. It has to break the ground. To get there.
Well, the applicant, the applicant would need to. Obtain a building. Permit from the town of Ashland and I. I'm sure our building commissioner would put. Any conditions that are. That he feels necessary to protect the uh. The surroundings uh in the building. In the building permit.
Okay. And um. It has no. It has no uh other. Bylaws or anything that's going, but it's going by every, it's going by every book. Every loop and everything that is supposed to be doing. And he's going through the steps, which this is great thing about it. But this was, I just wanted to see, I was just asking about the the line of borders and what you told me. Mr. Chairman, about what's left there in the side and the uh back. That was my basic questions I was gonna ask about that and I just wanted to make sure that. When there's gotta be a special permit was. I'm not on the board, but I was gonna say probably will be passed. That it's gonna be every dot. I is gonna be dotted, every every T is gonna be crossed on this. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Appreciate the questions. Um, any? Other members of the public who wish to be um heard on this matter? I'm hearing no one going once, going twice. Um, a motion to close public comment. Someone wish to make it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, hi, John Drifethan, vote in favor of closing public comment.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor of closing public comment.
Nathan Ben, vote in favor of closing public comment.
Hi, Stuart Segal, vote. In favor of closing public comment.
Hi, Anton DeComore, I'll vote in favor.
Okay. Um, well, members of the board, um. As we. Customarily do, why don't we? Not enter into deliberations at the moment, but um. Just discuss our preliminary thoughts on this matter. Uh, I'm going to assume based on the. Uh, questions or lack of questions that people had that. Um, there are, everybody is in favor of granting the um. Special permit request with. You know, the usual conditions that we. Place on hearing decisions uh involving a special permit request for. Accessory dwelling unit. Have I read the board correctly on that?
Yes, you have, John.
Boy, I haven't lost my touch, that's good. Uh, okay, then why don't we do this? Um, and Nathan, you made a very good point about the nine point three point two. Criteria to make sure that we have the necessary information to make that uh. To make that finding. Uh, Mr. Pelletier, in order to grant a special permit. Um, one of the things that the board has to decide. Is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood. In view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in a relation in relation to that site. Uh, and in addition to any specific factors such as the um. Seven point six um accessible dwelling unit. Um, there are six separate criteria that the board has to make findings of. Based upon evidence that has been introduced at the hearing. And item number one is community needs serviced by the proposal. And I'm gonna suggest the community need is met by allowing members of a family to um. Live in the uh. Basically in the same household. Uh. And to um allow a senior citizen to remain. Uh, close to her family. Item number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Um. Mr. Pelletier indicated there would be one additional car. Um, parking would be in a garage. Um, I would suggest that there would not be any. Um, additional impact on traffic flow and safety on East Union Street. And if any of the board members uh want to add anything on any of these, just um please speak up. Number three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Uh, Mr. Pelletier, you do have town water, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's the sewer that you are going to. Be applying for.
Yes, we need to tie into sewer.
Because I would anticipate that one of the conditions we would want to impose on this. Is that the property be serviced by uh. Town sewer. Uh, four is neighborhood character and social structures. It's going to continue to be a residential uh property with another family member added. Uh, to the um. To the home, so I would think that would cover that category. Number four, five, I'm sorry. Yeah, number five is. Impacts on the natural environment. Um. Would not seem to be any uh. Impacts. Are there any trees going to be cut down or anything, Mr. Pelletier?
There might be a few trees in the back that need to. Uh, get get trimmed, but there will still be uh separation from from us to the to the house behind us. Uh, I think there it looks. Like maybe one or two trees right on on the the line of our grass. But not on our property line. Um, there's. A good amount of woodage behind our house.
Okay. And finally, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. Um. I'm sure Mr. Pelletier will be glad to know that his real estate tax bill will probably be increased as a result of this. Uh. The impact on town services would not seem to be. Uh. Uh, significant with one additional uh resident uh. Effect or an impact on water or sewer.
She technically lives in Ashland now.
Okay, so just going to be transferred from one location to another. And employment. Um, temporary construction employment, I think, is what we typically. Uh, find on on this, there would not seem to be any anything else. Those okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Um, well, the um. The member sitting on the hearing would be uh Brian Forrestall, Nathan Band and. And myself. Um, and. I. We wanna vote on this tonight, uh, we're going to have to come back to a. Approve a decision at our next meeting, or do we wanna? Just continue the hearing to the next meeting. Uh, and um. Keep the hearing open and the event questions come up. How do people wanna proceed? Brian, thoughts?
Yeah, I think we should vote tonight and this is. Written. You know, by the zoning laws, that means it can't get any more clear cut.
Okay, and we won't just won't close the hearing, so. Uh, is there a motion to enter into deliberations?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, I, John Drifethan, vote in favor.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Hi, Nathan Ben, vote in favor.
Okay, that being said, um. Uh, I'm in favor of granting the uh special permit. Uh, with the um usual conditions that we place in an accessory dwelling unit um decision. Uh, restricting it obviously to occupancy only by a family member. Uh, and um. The other requirements in section. Uh, seven point uh six, which also we would put in the um. In the hearing decision. Um. Brian?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, so I, John Drifethan, vote in favor. Of granting the special permit?
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor of granting the special permit.
I, Nathan Ben, vote in favor and also second the motion to vote on it.
Who you are on the top of your game tonight, catching that, okay? I was just blown right by that, but that's okay. Uh, and Emma's smiling, so there you go. Okay, um, Emma, do you have enough to draft a decision and get it out to us?
Yes, I will send out the draft decision.
Okay, now. We do have another meeting in October. Oh, we will have another meeting in October, so. We don't have to worry about the one meeting in the month of November. Okay, Mr. Pelletier, um. The board has voted to grant the special permit. Um, we have to make a written decision, which we all have to sign. Uh, Emma is going to uh draft the uh special decision of the decision. Uh, and when we. Uh, return on October twenty fifth. Uh, for the next meeting, two weeks from tonight. We will take up the uh hearing decision. And if it is um. All set, as I'm sure it will be, then. The board members have to sign the decision and it gets filed with the town clerk's office. And once filed with the town clerk's office. There is a twenty day, is it twenty day period, waiting period? Um, in case anyone wishes to appeal the decision. Um, and after that twenty day period, you can get a. The certificate from the town clerk, which will get. Which you can file in the registry of deeds and proceed forward with the uh. Forward with your project.
Okay.
Have I stated that all correctly, Emma? Okay, I'm doing pretty well tonight. Um, that being said, uh, shall we continue? Tonight's public hearing to. Uh, next Tuesday, October twenty fifth at seven PM. And would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved, but it would be two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, I don't know what I said, October, October twenty fifth.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Um, before, before a second, do we have any staff updates, administrative matters that we need to?
Well, I just, we were continuing this hearing, not, not a journey.
Okay, alright.
You're two steps ahead of me.
I was.
Which is not unusual.
On the last one, and then I dropped the ball here, alright, yeah, I, I'm in favor.
Okay, I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of continuing the hearing?
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor?
I, Nathan Band, in favor.
Okay. I don't know whether Stu and Anton need to vote on this or not. I, I guess not if they're not signing the decision. And they're not involved in the hearing. Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pelletier. We will see you back on October twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda, as um, Nathan was. And pointed out, our staff updates or. Administrative matters, anything to report, Emma?
Um, I do anticipate uh, that there will be a meeting on November twenty-second. Um, there's a special permit request for um, uh, two-family conversion. So, um, but besides that, nothing else.
Okay, very good. Um. Anton, you have a question?
Uh, I just wanted to note that I have to miss the next meeting because it seems I'm getting married, so. See you guys in November.
Congratulations.
Glad to see you've got your priorities in order, at least.
Well, you know, zoning board's pretty high up there.
Well, I can, I can understand, I mean, you know, we can, we do meet remotely, so you could take your lap. Well, never mind. Uh, we won't, we won't go there. Excellent, congratulations, that's uh, very good news.
Thank you.
Okay, and um. How close is this twenty-second of November to Thanksgiving? Is that Thanksgiving week?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, and so I would just ask if there are others that have travel plans um. To, to let us, that week, let us, let us know, that's all, so we can plan accordingly. We'll be down one. Uh, so we still have something to go, but we don't need to decide that tonight. Um, actually, it sounds like all of our business, other than my continuing to prattle on, is over probably, so.
Did, did, if everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Oh. Yeah, I jumped right over those, but yeah, I was too busy trying to catch up to um. To Nathan's uh. Request there. Okay, minutes um, were sent out this afternoon by uh, by Emma. If people had an opportunity to review them? Okay, I see, so, okay, um, I had just one. One change, which was a typographical error on the spelling of someone's name. Um, any other proposed changes or concerns? If not, motion to approve the minutes um. Of our last meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, and there's a second? Well, we can take the second. So move to act as a second, how's that instead of a first? Again, I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of approving the minutes?
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor of approving the minutes?
Hi, Nathan Band, in favor?
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor?
Hi, Anton de Kamer, I'll vote in favor.
Excellent, we are. We are done. Do we have to vote to adjourn? I think we do, don't we? I usually just say goodbye and I always get called back. Um, okay, Brian. Move to adjourn, is there a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of adjourning?
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor?
Hi, Nathan Band, in favor?
My Stuart Siegel, vote in favor of adjourning?
Hi, Anton de Kamer, I'll vote in favor.
Excellent, then we are adjourned and thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye.